Good evening and welcome to the Orange County School Board's regularly scheduled meeting this Tuesday, May 14, 2019. We're going to begin with a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance, and we welcome you to join us. Thank you. Well, we have tonight, for anybody who might be watching us live, they may not see the audience, we have literally a packed house. We have opened the back of our chambers up, and we have a packed house for a wonderful reason, I will have to tell you, after a few years of having served in public office, when I see a packed house, it makes me a little bit nervous. It's often a sign something did not go right. In this case, it is a sign that so much has gone right. And we are so excited to welcome you all here. We are here to celebrate some pretty incredible achievements by students. The first group of students are winners from the 64th Annual State Science and Engineering Fair. That fair is the largest academic competition in the state. It's a three-day event that recognizes the scientific and problem-solving talent of our youth. This year statewide, there were 850 science research projects and approximately 890 finalists participating in grades six through 12. More than 300 judges interviewed the finalists to determine the award winners. The winnings include $1.2 million in scholarships and $32,000 in awards and prizes. Orange County Public Schools is proud to announce that we have six winners with us here tonight. If each of you will call or will stand, call when I stand your name, stand when I call your name, we'd love to have an opportunity to recognize you. From Lake Nona High School, Alexandria Bias. Alexandria took third place in the chemistry category. Congratulations. We have three, yeah, one more time, absolutely. We have three fourth-place winners from Avalon Middle School, Anaya Stewart. Where's Anaya? Oh, Anaya's not here with us yet, okay. Anaya won fourth place in the field of engineering. And from Maitland Middle School, Zachary Redisk. Redisk. Zachary won fourth place for microbiology. Yeah. And Zachary Brightenbaugh from Wedgefield School is our other Zachary here with us today. Okay, well, if not, let me just still announce this, because he won fourth place in the field of physics and astronomy. I know, wow, right? There was an honorable mention award for Jessica Jo. Is Jessica here? She won her honorable mention in mathematics and computational sciences. And a special recognition for Ivan Gopineko. Give me a chance. Gopineko? Thank you. So Ivan is with Lake Nona Middle School, and he won his special recognition in the field of intelligent machines, robotics, and system software. I would challenge any adult in the room to even figure out what that means, okay? And he's in middle school. This is an extremely impressive group, and we are so proud of each and every one of you. Congratulations. You are such wonderful examples for the entire student body of Orange County Public Schools, and you are making us up here so very proud of you, your parents, and the teachers that have been involved in your education to this point. You know what we would love? If each of you would just take a minute so that you could come up and just start here at my, that would be my right. We'd just like to personally be able to say congratulations. So come on up, kids. Okay, wow, our future looks really bright when we look at the four of you all. So we'll be keeping an eye on you. All right, we have another group of high achievers in the field of STEM with us, and they are the Sunshine State Scholars. The Sunshine State Scholars Program has recognized the best and brightest junior classmen for their accomplishment in the STEM fields. Each high school has, was invited to nominate one junior who excels in their STEM classes as well as their overall academic achievement. The students selected represent OCPS at the state level, where they interact with STEM industry leaders from across the state, as well as Florida's colleges, university, and STEM programs. So if each of you could call as I, do it again, stand as I call your name, and I'm going to try my very best to get your names right. Let's begin with Sean McAbbie. Is Sean here? Sean, congratulations. Sean's with Boone High School. Making Boone proud. Phoebe Matthew, is Phoebe here? Phoebe is with Cypress Creek High School. How about Steven Friend? Is Steven Friend here? All right, we don't have Steven here with us yet tonight. He's with West Orange High School. And Sunshine State Scholar alternate is Molly Palmer. Is Molly with us tonight? Molly, congratulations. Can I ask you all to come up so we can personally recognize you all, too? Thank you. Well, we are just a couple of weeks away from the last day of school for the 2018-19 year. It has gone by so fast, and this is always the most exciting time of year for the board, and I know for so many of our students and our parents and our faculty. Tonight, we're taking the opportunity to recognize more of our seniors and their accomplishments. With us tonight, we have graduates who are certainly standouts among their peers. These students are not only receiving their high school diploma this month, but also an associate's degree. This year, the number of students graduating with a high school diploma and an associate's degree has increased yet again. Last year, it was 70; this year, it's over 100, 102. That's a pretty significant percentage increase. Probably most of you here, but not everybody who's watching, knows that Orange County Public Schools offers dual enrollment as an acceleration program that allows eligible high school students to pursue post-secondary coursework at Valencia College while simultaneously earning credit towards their high school completion. The students in dual enrollment program have an opportunity to enroll in a combination of advanced placement courses which earn college credits if they pass their exams and Valencia courses. The OCPS Valencia graduates are recognized tonight, have completed enough college coursework to, as I said before, earn their entire AA degree, and, best part to the parents, it was free. They have also completed all of their general education requirements and are ready to pursue their college major. I'm telling you, boy, I wish, I wish, I wish I had that opportunity when I was your age, but I'll be honest with you, I don't, I didn't have the discipline that you all have, and that's, my hat goes out to every one of you that has worked so hard to get to this point. Tonight, we have with us Dr. Mike Bosley, Executive Dean from Valencia, to announce the students. Welcome.
Good evening. Chairperson Jacobs, Superintendent Jenkins, and the rest of the board, and all my colleagues from Orange County Public Schools, principals and teachers. Valencia is very proud of our partnership with Orange County Public Schools. We have partnerships at many levels, acceleration levels, as well as remediation levels, developmental levels, to get our students ready to go to college. Tonight, we celebrate some of our best and brightest at both Valencia and Orange County Public Schools, and there are thousands of students who take part in the dual enrollment program. Tonight, we recognize the 100 that completed this year, but we have many more that will continue with us at Valencia and earn their AA degree and then move on to their next institution. So I have the task of reading these names. Chairperson Jacobs, you've tried really hard. I'm going to try as hard, and I have not practiced any of them, so if I say your name wrong, please let me know, and I'll be happy to re-say it. So Popka High School is up first, and I think you're just going to go along there as I read your name. Denise Lane. Elena Corkus. Natalie Carpio. Isaiah Collado Woods. Here come my Boone High School graduates. Kylie Webster. Kylie Seaver. Correia Alboroz. Colonial High School, Diana Resto Ocasio. Nicole Rivera Diaz. My Cypress Creek students, Giovanni Grisales. Dr. Phillips, Brianna Marie Wallace. Sean Hartman. Our East River students are next. I'll just take that one. Lily York. Sandra Arroyo Payos. Brianna Nolton. Jenna Countryman. My Edgewater High School person, Gracia Giante. From Freedom, Trent Dawn. Jose Cruzado. Piper Daniels. My Lake Nona students, you're going to hold on to that. Brittany Torres Rivera. Maria Solomon. Alexandria Bias. Kadabri Weiss. Christina Border. Sean Matharo. Hannah Karpuchinsky. I keep trying. Every time I read it, I get better. Matthew Garcia. George Manger. Salina Vega. Amber Gefani Albor. My Timber Creek students, hold on to that. Kendria Simpson. Brandon Zouzio. Amir Safar. Naida Velez Sabat. Nicole Gezo. Gabriela Buaras. Emilio Thomas. Okowi students? Yep, you can hold on to that. That's your gift, yeah. Ali Safik. Olympia. Sophia Cologne. U Queen U Mari Fernandez. Alexis Williams. Jasmine Lukusu. My university high school students, Tatiana Serna. Brianna Ramos. Jennifer Scales. Matthew Courtney. Karina Rodriguez Torres. Ariel Vincent. Erin Vincent. My Wakava students, Ashley Rodriguez. West Orange, Paul Atwood. Winter Park, Austin Lockhart. And Oak Ridge, Janani Rinalden. Yeah, thank you. Again, thank you for your time. We're so proud of our students, and we can't wait for our OCPS and Valencia grads to come back to our community and work among us and do great things in the community.
Absolutely. We've got to keep them here, and you've been a big part of helping us do that by creating a new home for them while they're here. Thank you for the partnership.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Absolutely. All right, Dr. Jenkins? Do we have any changes to, now we have to get to work. Sorry. Bye. You don't have to stay with us.
Thank you, parents.
Bye, parents. Thank you, and God bless you. You did an awesome job. Yeah, 70 to 102 in one year. That is amazing. Huh? She did.
She did. She's not. She's looking for a job.
No, no, I'm sorry, that was a good, that was a good sound on my part. Scared everybody. Okay. So Dr. Jenkins, do we have any changes to the, I'm sorry, do we have any newly appointed administrators to recognize?
We have none.
No, we do not.
Are these parents?
These are all the parents that were here. Yeah, I know. Yay, parents.
Thank you, parents.
I know. That's so cool, yeah. So Mr. Rodriguez, we have, we had a discussion, you and the superintendent and I, about the agenda, and where did we land in terms of the strategic plan? Do we want to go ahead and take the impact fee update now? Yes?
Yeah, I think they're ready to go, and I think it'd be good to
Excellent. Very good.
Get them started as they file out.
Okay, very good.
Thank you. I'll let them introduce themselves.
Good evening. Just get this open.
Selva, wonderful to have you with us.
Good evening. I'm Julie Selva with Facilities Planning, and I just wanted to quickly introduce our consultant team to give you the official, first official update to the school impact fee study. OCPS staff has been working since, with Orange County Government and our advisory committee and our consultant team since last year to provide this update to you today. The study establishes, in essence, a capital cost per student station, which is the basis for the school impact fee. This fee is updated every, usually every four years, but we decided to look at it in two years instead of four years this time around because of, we wanted to make sure we captured all those rising costs. The study takes about eight months to complete, and so we are officially in the home stretch, and we're hoping to have a new fee in effect by early 2020, probably January 2020. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to our consultant team. Negan Camp is with Tindell Oliver. They have done the last few impact fee studies for OCPS, and they've done impact fee work throughout the entire state of Florida, and we're really glad to have them here and working with us. Thank you.
Well, good afternoon. I'm Negan Camp with Tindell Oliver. I also have Steve Tindell here, who's the principal on the project. We have a relatively brief presentation going through the background and the findings and next steps. So in terms of the background, the school district worked to develop a methodology during 2007 and 2011 updates. There was advisory groups formed just like this time, and they came up with the methodology that was agreed upon, and the studies after that followed that same methodology. In 2016, the only change to this methodology was the separation of townhouses as a separate category to reflect their impact, and also in 2016, there was a request to update every two years, like Julie mentioned.
Negan, if I can interrupt for a minute, I know you're running through this quickly, and you've already given board members a briefing, but I know we do have one member of the public who had some questions about impact fees and had, I think, had been given some misinformation about how they're determined. I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but I know that you and Mr. Tindell know this like the back of your hand. Just, if you could just give a brief explanation of the legal environment in which we have to adopt impact fees, because I did receive an email that we could set them at any level that we wanted, and knowing that not to be the case, I thought it would be helpful if you could explain the legal requirements in terms of how we impose those impact fees.
Okay, so I think maybe...
And that might be in your presentation, but...
Okay, so, yeah, we'll start with that first. So the impact fees are really a one-time capital charge for new development, and the purpose is to recover cost of new capital needed by new growth. So it can only be used for new capacity, not for maintenance operations. It also needs to be proportional to the impact of the fee payer. So by that, what we mean is we calculate the cost of providing school infrastructure, how much it's costing the district to build a school building, and then from that, we look at how the school district is funding that capacity. To the extent that there are any taxes that are being used, a portion of it is coming from new growth, so they get a credit, so they are not charged twice for the same infrastructure. So then that net cost gets multiplied by the student generation rate of each type of residential category to figure out how much a single family is, what kind of burden a single family is putting on, and so on. So that's in a very nutshell, quick summary of how the impact fees sort of are governed.
Thank you.
Sure. And again, in terms of the collections, this is one fee that's collected only from residential land uses, and it is, what we always like to explain is, schools and transportation are the most expensive infrastructure that a community provides, and then because schools are charged only to residential, those, that kind of, you can see that in the fees, that fees tend to be on the higher end. And then Orange County is unique in its challenges, so Orange County is fifth in population in the state out of 67 counties, so it's a large county, seventh in population growth rate, so it's projected to grow about 1.5% almost per year, and second in absolute population growth. It's projected to be, to add about 625,000. So what you're dealing with is a large county that is growing rapidly and adding quite a bit of people, so that's requiring a very extensive effort to keep up with that kind of growth. On top of it, it's a young county, so when we look at the age distribution, the blue bars showing the Florida average, and the orange bars is the county, and you can see that you are a lot younger, the dominant groups are 20 to 30 years old, and whereas the statewide is more like 50 to 60. So that means you have a higher student generation rate as well. So you are 11th in student generation rate, meaning all school-age kids in the state, and between 2011 and 2017, we identified about maybe 85 new schools being built. Almost half of them are built in Orange County, and then the rest are built by 25 other counties. And you can see, like, the most schools any other county builds is maybe six schools, while you are building almost 40. So, and that's partially because of the demand that you are receiving, you know, with the high growth levels and young demographics, so it is a significant effort. We're not seeing that anywhere else, as you can see. The study itself is a consumption-based methodology, again, like I mentioned, it charges new growth for the value of school capacity that they are consuming. So this is our basic impact fee formula, again. The cost is really the school buildings, transportation buses, and so on, so it's the capital asset value per student, you know, what it's costing today to provide that value. Credit is any non-impact fee revenue from new development. We are giving credit just for their portion, and that net cost gets multiplied by demand, which is measured in terms of student generation rate of each housing type. So the findings, we have several elements that we go through. We look at the inventory. Inventory only includes traditional schools. We don't include charter, charter schools, private schools or anything like that. It's just the traditional typical schools that the school district has to provide. And we look at the service delivery, cost, credit components, and the generation rate. So by service delivery, we look at what type of schools the school district is building or likely to build in the future, like the prototype schools. So in terms of square footage per permanent station, those figures did not change since the last study. Last study was based on what you intended to be built at the time, and you actually did build the same measurement, so you have 110 square feet per station in an elementary school, 130 in the middle and high. So we kept those the same between the studies. When we go to facility costs, we intend to include all costs related to build schools, anything from architectural design, site improvement, buildings, furniture fixture, land purchase, and so on. So the data sources were like historical and ongoing projects, and because you are building so many schools, that we had a very good sample size, we look at any, you know, bids and estimates you also have, and then we did look at the other cost information from other jurisdictions, but really, you have the largest sample, and impact fees are supposed to be based on most recent and localized data, so we had really nice set of data from your past few years of construction. So over the, maybe four years, since 2016, there were almost 30 schools built, about 20 elementary and nine middle and one high school, and these included both new schools and replacement schools. We looked at them separately to make sure if there's any cost differential that we recognized that. And of that 29, about 17 are completed and 12 are still ongoing. So this is, this chart kind of shows the district's cost over time for elementary schools, and you can see in 2007, we had a high cost, and then 2011 was the downturn, the costs went down, and 2015 study looked at actual costs but as well as upcoming, so we estimated something in between, and then looks like this time around, we are a little higher than that, but that estimate kind of helped buffer the cost increases along the way. So this study, the per square foot cost, we are estimating about $145 for elementary schools. That's a little bit lower than the budgeted cost, but it's in line with what you recently built, so for impact fee purposes, we feel comfortable with that. So this chart kind of shows all the data we have based on recent, ongoing constructions, looking at insurance values, any estimates in the CIP, and other Florida jurisdictions. So based on all that information, the cost per square foot is ranging about 135 to 150, depending on the school type level. We have additional costs, like the facility support costs, you know, these are things like the hurricane shelters, drainage, public roads, and so on, as well as other costs, and those are the moving cost, classroom technology, and so on. Those are all part of, considered capital costs, and they are audited costs after a school is completed. So those type of costs are estimated, again, based on what the district built over the past few years, what everybody else's percentages are, this is just kind of showing percent of each of these additional costs as a building cost. So the final estimate in 2019 is about, for example, 7% for architectural design, 11% for site prep, 8 for furniture fixture, and now facility support and other supports is 10 each. So when we compare over time, that's an increase from the last study. Last study ended up about 28% additional cost, and this is like 46%. So one part of it is the facility support cost increase from 5 to 10%, and then we captured, we had a better job of capturing other costs, which were not necessarily captured in the last study. So this, this time around, I think we are able to capture all of the costs in a better way, and there are more schools for us to be able to do that, more schools built in this study. So when we include everything as far as the buildings excluding land, all of the costs combined shows an increase of about 7%. Then for land value, we look at any recent land purchases, those lands that are under contract, value of the existing parcels, and then vacant land sales values. So this is kind of showing you how the land values change. In 2015, we were just coming out of the downturn, so land values were starting to increase, and now we are seeing a continual increase. So it ranged anywhere from, depending on the type of vacant land, anywhere from 10, 12% to all the way to 30, 40% increase since 2015. So we looked at any recent purchases, that they averaged about 87,000, and some, the range is from 0 to 410,000, because some of them are pure donation without getting any credits. Lands that are under contract is about 117. Value of the existing parcels, as estimated by the property arbiter, are 66,000. Value of the existing parcels, as estimated by the property appraiser, are 66,000, but they tend to be conservative, because property appraiser doesn't always update the non-taxpaying property. And then the vacant land sales are about 215,000, and then the values are about 116,000. So given the purchases that the district made and some of the other information, we felt comfortable that with the average estimate of 115,000 per acre. So that's a 15% increase since the last study. That seems to line up with the overall increases we've seen as well. This has a lot of numbers, but bottom line is, this takes all the cost elements, adds them up, and multiplies by the square footage to come up with a cost per student station. And at the very last row, you can see that's ranging from 25,000 to 30,000 with the overall average of 28,000, based on the type of schools the district will build over the next so many years. When we look at, compared to the previous studies, overall, the cost figure that goes into the equation increased about 6%. The other thing we had to do is compare it, compare the cost to the DOE's station, student station cost. About the time that the study completed last time, the Department of Education changed the rules to prohibit from using any additional dollars to build the future of the student stations. They wanted, if the school district exceeded their established cost per student station, there would be a penalty. But when we look at the costs that are included in that student station cost, Orange County is actually building them cheaper. So you really don't have any issue there. And so we continue with the local cost, rest of the analysis. And then we convert the cost per station to cost per student by looking at the relation of the enrollment and capacity. And because you are allowing 10% additional capacity as a standard at the elementary level, that 27,000, 28,000 decreases to about 26,000, 27,000. In addition to building costs, there are transportation and ancillary facility costs. Those are relatively minor, and in total, they stay relatively stable between the two studies. But they reflect the costs associated with buses and maintenance facilities, administrative facilities, and so on. Then we look at the credit, which is basically, you know, how the school district is funding this infrastructure and to what extent new development is contributing toward that. So we look at the total cash expenditures going back five years and next five years, and that resulted in a credit of about 4,000 per student. And then any outstanding debt service that was used for capacity projects is also credited, and that gave us about $700 credit. And that's one of the elements that decreased since the last study, because the school district has been paying off the debt, so there is less of that. So overall, total impact cost per student compared to the last study increased about 5%. The credit itself decreased about 20%, so that increases the fee. And then the net cost per student, as a result, increased about 12%. So this net cost, and then we looked at the student generation rates. These are the current categories in your adopted fee schedule. So single family went down slightly, townhouses increased, multifamily did not change at all, and now mobile homes is more of a correction that increased, the units that were, there's a better tracking by the property appraiser of the units and which units are restricted, age-restricted, and so on. So that's because of that correction, it went up. So overall, the generation rate remained relatively stable, even though there are shifts between the categories. So this study, one consideration was whether to separate high rises in the multifamily category. So if we do that, you can see that the multifamily high rise, instead of being, last study was averaged in .281, now it goes down to .013, which is pretty minimal. And then the remaining multifamily, all the other apartments, condos that are not high-rise, go up slightly, .286. So when we, we basically take the generation rate and multiply by net cost per student to come up with the fee. So with the current categories, you can see that the residential fee goes up to about, I mean, single-family detached goes up to about 9,600, it's a 9% increase. And then townhouses are about 8,800, multifamily is about 6,600. And then if we do separate the high-rise, that category gets a pretty low fee of $300. And then the remaining multifamily goes up slightly to 6,700. So in terms of the next step, of course, today we are here to answer any question, get your input in direction, and then we'll publish the final report and now move to implementation process. This is just the schedule as it stands now. I think after this meeting, we hope to give the final report next week, and then we have a school impact fee advisory committee meeting early June. And then I think adoption process is expected to be completed August or October. Then we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Again, by thanking you for a great job again this year and working together with the team that we convene, along with the county. It's always very helpful to have lots of eyes on this process and involved in this. And let me also say, I know that our board members know, but I doubt most of the public knows, how close we came at the end of the legislative session to a measure to try to limit the impact fee growth by, I believe it was 5% over a two-year period. And obviously, it doesn't make, doesn't make any sense when you look at how impact fees are calculated, but that doesn't, that doesn't prevent legislation from passing. So given how important impact fees have been to Orange County public schools in terms of keeping up with the significant growth that we've had, we're very relieved that we continue to have this form of revenue. And to Eileen, and to Cody, and to the team that spends time, and to, to our own member, Member Gala, who spends time, half the time camped out in Tallahassee herself, we thank everybody for their hard work in keeping this source of revenue as a viable source of revenue for us moving forward. Let me recognize Member Gould.
I know that this report's going into final, and that we will be workshopping, you know, kind of the decision points on this, and this is a strategic plan update. But a couple of things that I just wanted to kind of put out into the ether. One is, our builders and developers are very good partners overall in our community. And I want to make sure the line of communication is open with them so that we hear about all of their discussion points and make sure they're engaged as we go into the workshop so that we kind of get the full breadth of the picture. And I also want to applaud the work that you did with now the data that you have. I don't think, I don't want to lose this point, that that 12% increase is not apples to apples from last time. We were not counting all of the costs rolled into new schools, because we only had a few schools that were new at the time. And now we've gotten really good at building new schools, and we understand the total cost. And I think that's an important communication when we come out and we talk about it being a 12% increase, when cost of living is 3%-ish. So that, I think, is part of the education as we go into the community and the discussion points in our workshop. And I just wanted to point out those two things. Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other board members? No? Member Gala, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just for clarification, Member Gould just mentioned that we were able to capture some of those other costs that we haven't previously. Can you just inform us of what those costs were that we didn't have previously? Did I miss it on the...
I think it'd be easier if I can pull it up. That's why, oh, sorry about that. So these type of costs were the ones that were excluded last time. So it's the kind of the moving cost, audit cost, these are at the end of the project, probably, that are sort of recognized and accounted for. And it could have been like, we were sort of, some of the projects we had were in the middle of the construction, we didn't have full cost. So this time, because there were so many schools and so many eyes were looking at our numbers, that the finance and the facilities realized that some of the costs that, like these, weren't previously reflected.
Absolutely. These other costs that you're showing on the screen, is that the same as what other support is on Slide 20?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions from board members? Member Gordon?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to ask, in reference, I know, I don't think you brought that slide up, the one on the student generation rate.
Let me just bring that up.
I think it was about your last slide. I think on number 43, it might have been.
Okay. Sorry. This one?
Yes. No.
The next one, the high-rise?
Forty-three.
Oh, sorry, forty-three, sorry.
I don't, you may not have put it in this, but you didn't put it in. Okay, because I did want you to explain to the public the difference with the larger counties compared to Orange County and compared to where we stand with the state of Florida, yes.
That one, okay.
Student generation rate.
Right. This is, this is all student-age kids, school-age kids, five to 17, throughout the state. And you can see, you are like, I think you are 11th highest, and quite a bit higher than most of the other ones, so yes.
Even the larger districts?
Yes.
So can you share that with us? Because, explain it to us, the difference there? Because even with the state of Florida, where we are there with the student generation rate.
Right. Student, for example, state of Florida is about .3 and so on, and you are over .4. And you are, of course, much larger county, so it's a lot more students. And some of the other ones that have a higher one are more rural and smaller counties.
Yes.
So they are handling fewer students even at that rate. So yeah, so you have definitely much bigger challenges than most other counties.
That's the point I'm trying to make, even though Miami-Dade, because I'm looking at Hillsborough County, Miami-Dade, Duval, Broward County, Palm Beach, all of those are a little lower. But because of what you're, I think the people need to know that.
Right. You are a much younger county, like, for example, yeah, Broward and Palm Beach tend to be older, so they don't have as many students, even though they are large counties. So yeah, definitely, yeah, you are, you're one of the largest counties, like we said, 15 in population, and you're growing very fast, and you are a young county. So as far as school infrastructure, you're dealing with a completely different set of challenges compared to most other, or any of the other counties.
And we do want to thank you, all the committee, and your time that you do serve, and helping us keep abreast of all of this, because this is very important, and keeping us up on what's coming ahead, because that means a lot. So thank you so very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Member Gordon. I think it's also important to remember to thank the citizens of Orange County that have supported Orange County public schools again, and again, and again. I think, how many times has it been now? Three times in the, four, yeah? When they rejected every other tax proposal that's come forward in about 20 years. So, great job to the citizens and recognizing the need, but thanks, but great job to Orange County Public Schools. Julie, to you and your team, and to Laura, thank you for the hard work that you put into these updates as well each year. Mr. Tyndall, it's wonderful having you here with us today. It's certainly not necessary for you to drive all the way over from Tampa, but it's always wonderful to see you. And I also want to recognize, rare occurrence, at least for me, is to have Chris Testerman in the audience. Chris, I'm gonna, I'm not even sure what your title is right now. I don't know if it's Deputy County Administrator or Assistant, anyway, second to big chief. Very important to have you here with us, and we appreciate the working relationship we've enjoyed with Orange County. And of course, that's going to be the most important stop along the way. So we appreciate this update. Is there anything else that we need to do before we move on then? All right. Wonderful to see you again.
Thank you.
And we'll be covering, when we have our workshop on growth in general, we'll be covering some of the issues that Ms. Gordon mentioned in terms of our high growth rate, the fact that the state, their projections don't generally seem to keep up with our projections, which means that the money doesn't follow the growth as quickly as it can or needs to. So all of that and more will be part of our learning opportunity with the community, and we welcome others, including Mr. Olson, to please join us as part of that process. All right, thank you. We're going to move on then?
Thank you.
Safe travels. Before we move on to our next item on the agenda, I want to invite the public, those members of the public that wish to address the board, that maybe have not already filled out a speaker's card. If you're here to address the board on anything that's on our agenda, you'll need to fill out a yellow speaker card. I have a couple of speakers here. If you are here to speak on something on non-consent, we'll take your comments at that time. If you're on, speaking to the consent agenda, we'll take your comments before we vote on the consent agenda. Couple of items I just need to cover in terms of housekeeping. Please remember that this opportunity to speak is an opportunity to provide testimony to the board. It is not an opportunity to engage in debate with the board. And there are certain topics that are not appropriate for discussion, including if you are competing for business in front of the, with this body, would not be appropriate to discuss that at this time. So with that, let me turn it over to Dr. Jenkins to introduce our next item on the agenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It is time for our public hearing on targeted rezoning that has been previously workshopped. I'd like to make members of the public aware, this is information that has been gone over extensively with the board previously, so no one assumes that the brevity of presentation is any indication of lack of interest and lack of due diligence on the part of the board. Specifically, Dr. McGowan will be going through rezoning for targeted areas that are listed on the agenda, and approval of the rezoning for the new elementary schools commencing August 2020. Dr. McGowan?
Thank you, and good evening, board members. Prior to beginning my presentation, let me introduce Stacy Neal from my staff, who will be presenting with me. This evening, we're bringing forth the advertised options for two relief schools, 83E, SE3, and 20ESW4. Both schools will open in August of 2020. All relief schools are given a unique name that follows them as we go through the rezoning process and the building process. One more. And we have 83 is the property real estate number, E is the school type, in this case elementary, SE is our learning community, southeast, and 3 is the board member district. All rezonings, no matter how small, follow School Board Policy JC. This policy is followed whether we rezon for a new school, like tonight, a neighborhood or vacant land. A review of our eight-step process is shown on our slides, steps one to four. We begin with the superintendent commencing the rezoning, we present a timeline, we meet with stakeholders, and we do all our research and data collection. At that point, we bring forth options to our community at the community meeting. We hold a rural development workshop, the public hearing, and then we store our rezoning notebook. At both our rural development workshop and the public hearing, the community is invited to speak. The slide in front of you shows the timeline for this rezoning. March 7th was our community meeting, April 18th was the rural development workshop, and May 14th, tonight, is our public hearing. As part of rezoning, the school board and the Policy JCA has a grandfather transfer. This transfer is eligible for students if they meet one of the three criteria. It's for students who have been rezoned by OCPS two or more times at a grade level such as K5, or a student who is rezoned from an established school to another established school, or if they are rezoned to a relief school in grades five to eight. We do not provide transportation, and the transfer eligibility is for each individual student. We want our insight and input from our public, and we have on our website, under rezoning initiatives, you see the steps to get where you can find the information. initiatives, you see the steps to get where you can find the information. And here's how our families give us their feedback. We have an electronic survey for each rezoning. They can email me, or they can have a petition. Any data that we present to you tonight on the input is a compilation of all those. At this time, we'll look at 83, SE3, start with the map of the site, and then we're going to look at the development for this area. Remind everyone that the red lines are the school zone lines for the 2019-20 school year. Those are the current. The different ones, the, we have the site of 83 at the top, and then we have the different developments that are being built. The green show the developments that are underway. Purple is plating, we'll see housetop soon, and pink, they're planned. This is our advertised option. Again, the red lines show the current school zone lines, the shaded areas are the proposed zones. The area in Salmon is McCoy, the area in purple is Three Points, yellow is for our new school, 83E, SE3. The pink would be Sunblaze, the orange color would be Moss Park, and the slightly blue color is going to be the proposed zone for Northlake Park. For each of these schools, you'll see a text box which gives you the name of the school, the permanent program capacity, the current number of students who reside in that zone, and the proposed number of students for 2020. In this rezoning, McCoy and Three Points are listed in everything that you see, there are no students involved for those two schools, it is a matter of cleaning up a line to make it more symmetrical. If we look at our data table, you will see the first column is the school and the program capacity, the next two will give you the enrollment for both October and February of the school year, the next one will tell you the number of students who reside in that current zone, and the proposed in that zone for 2020. The next column is again showing what you saw in the text box on the map. It does give us the number of students who currently reside in that proposed zone, you get the racial demographics of white, black, other, you get the non-Hispanic, Hispanic, and you get the projection for 2020. The next columns give us information about how the students score for FSA math and reading, the percentage that are at levels one and two, current being the current resides, proposed would be our proposal. And then we have our free and reduced meals, our exceptional education students, and our students that are English language learners. Since the rural development workshop, we have received two people who provided input for us. They support and deny, or actually four, two support, two oppose. Dr. Jenkins, this concludes our presentation for 83.
Thank you. Before I open it up to board discussion, we do have one member of the public here to address the board regarding this rezoning request, and that's Sarah, Sarah Siraj? Thank you. Sarah, as you come forward, when you get to the mic, if you could give your name and address for the record, and then you'll have three minutes when they conclude.
Thank you. Good evening, board, thank you for having me. My name is Sarah Siraj, address is 5001 Water Vista Drive, Orlando, Florida, 32821. This is in regards to the 20E SW4 plans. Just want to express my concern that it's overcrowded before it's even built. So, I know that this is right in line with everything that we've discussed up to this point, that the growth is very high, it's a challenge in Orange County. My son is in kindergarten, his school is overcrowded, it's definitely a concern for me, but moving him to a brand-new school that's already overcrowded is still a concern. So, thank you for hearing my opinion.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, on the, the item in front of us, Member Colbert, you're recognized.
So, on the one Dr. McGowan just presented on in District 3, I do support staff's recommendation on the zoning proposal for this school.
Okay, so we have a recommendation of support. Any, any opposition to the support? Mr. Rodriguez, do we need to vote on this at this stage? Okay, we have a motion then of support. Do we have a second?
Let me make that, I move to support staff's recommendation on the proposed zoning for this site.
Thank you, Ms. Colbert. Motion, motion by Member Colbert, seconded by Member Gould, all in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We're going to get to the one that you spoke about in just a minute, but thank you for your, your comments on that, and we will remember them. And back to you, Dr. Jenkins.
I'm going to present our next relief school, 20E SW4. Here's a overview of the location. Same presentation of the development area. The red lines are the current elementary school zones for the 2019-2020 school year. The location once again of 20E SW4 is south of International Drive. The development here, you have green, which represents development that is underway. Purple is the plating, meaning buildings will start, you'll start to see buildings. Pink is what's planned. So now, I'd like to go over the advertised option for 20E SW4. The red lines again are the current 2019-2020 elementary school zones. The purple shaded area is the proposed new zone for Tangelo Elementary. Okay, and the turquoise would be the new Millenia Elementary School Zone. I'm sorry, Shingle Creek. The orange is the new, or would be the new proposed zone for Sadler. The gray would be the new Wine Guard Elementary School Zone. The green would be the new Water Bridge Elementary School Zone. The yellow is the new school, 20E SW4. And the blue is the new, or would be the new Sand Lake, Sand Lake School Zone. And West Creek is the salmon, sorry, salmon color is West Creek Elementary new school zone, proposed school zone. The next slide I would like to present is the data table. As Dr. McGowan presented earlier, the first column is the school program capacity, or the name of the schools, and then enrollment compared from February and October. The next slide, or column, would be number of students residing. The column next to that is the proposed reside, resides and proposed students for 2020. FSA math and English, current and proposed level ones and twos. Next column is the free and reduced meals, ESE, or exceptional student education and English language learners, current and proposed. Okay, as of today, there have been no additional community input or feedback, or there hasn't been any. This will conclude our presentation of 20E SW4. Dr. Jenkins?
Thank you. All right, board members, we did already hear from Ms. Siraj, so at this time, if there's no other public comment, which I don't see, then we will move forward, and Member Gould, you're recognized.
I know this one is, was difficult too, because of the amount of students, but in looking at the, the growth in the area, which is primarily in Mrs. Colbert's area, even though the school physically sits in my district, many of those students are coming and getting relieved from Mrs. Colbert's district. I also would like to move that we follow the, the recommendation of the staff and the superintendent.
We have a member, a motion from Member Gould. Do we have, I'm sorry, we have a second from Member Colbert, and let's hear from Ms., Member Gordon?
I want to speak in reference to it, because we were impacted with the... Shingle Creek, as well as Sadler and the Tangelo Park community, and I'm really going to be monitoring and watching this, and I've already spoken with staff and the superintendent in reference to this, that we do not negate some of these schools and just overlook them because of a growth, and then have to come back later on and impact them again. There's no need for that to happen, but by working very closely with Dr. McGowan and Stacy and the entire staff, they're trying to make sure that we compensate all involved in not just the two districts, but that the District 5 has been impacted, we've had meetings together with all of us. So, we, we are not just laying low, we are watching and we are monitoring, and if we do need to come back, we will do so, if needed.
Point well taken, and it definitely, definitely impacts all the districts. So, with that, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. McGowan.
Thank you.
Dr. Jenkins, any changes that we need to make to the agenda?
Chairman, members of the board, we have one change, that is from item 5.01. Employee with initials KW needs to be removed for consideration as non-consent, item 1701.
Thank you very much. The chair finds cause to amend the agenda as requested by the superintendent. Is there a motion to amend the agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Member Bird, seconded by Member Gould, all in favor of the motion to amend the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and before we take action on the amended agenda, we do have several speaker cards, but they are all on 501, so we will take those up when we get to 1701. I have, I want to double-check, I have no other speaker cards on the consent agenda, so is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
Motion.
Motion by Member Colbert, is there a second? Second by Member Gallo, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We are on an information item from the superintendent, Dr. Jenkins?
Three quick items for you. Number one, congratulations to Dr. Bridget Williams and the HR department for being named 2019 Governor Sustained Excellence Award recipient for the Sterling Award. You may have seen the media release, I have to tell you, because sometimes people don't realize that the Sterling Award is not an award for school systems, it is an award for any business. The other two winners this year are the Florida Department of Health in Collier County and Wellstar Paulding Hospital. So, the award has been in place since 1992. It is for public or private, non, not-for-profit corporations supported by the executive office of the governor. The council oversees the Governor's Sterling Award for performance excellence and administers the award. It's presented annually to high-performing role model organizations, both private and public, who demonstrate superior management approaches and role model results. Congratulations to the team, they will be recognized. That conference actually will be in town next week, and they will be recognized. Board members will be invited to the banquet where these three winners will be recognized. Secondly, if you have time on Saturday, 9:30 at UCF, we used to host it in one of our high schools, it's too big for that now, over 800 of our students, kindergarten through 12th grade, will be participating in the chess club tournament this Saturday, 9:30 at the Student Union at UCF. If you've never witnessed it, it is something to behold, certainly want to congratulate those who have made it to the tournament. And then thirdly, by the time we meet again, Madam Chair, board members, we will be well into our graduation season. In fact, our last graduations are the night of May 28th, our next board meeting, so just congratulations to all of our parents and our seniors who will be graduating in the coming weeks. It's an exciting time that we are delighted to be a part of, so congratulations to parents and students as well. Chairman?
Thank you. Mr. Rodriguez, I know you have, we are having a closed session later on after this meeting is over, you have any announcements for the board at this time?
Um, no, just, I was going to let you all know that we are having a...
Uh-oh, does the board not know there's an executive session?
It's, it's a safety and executive session, so it's an update on our prior executive session.
I know, that's not the point, the point is...
It's not advertised, so...
No, no, the simple point is, I can hear the gasp that the board is not aware.
I don't think they were, they were told, because Ms. McGill told me earlier today, and I think Ms. Gordon also gave me a look like, what session is this? It's simply an update, our hope was to get a memo to update you on the information. I will be brief.
Okay.
We, if, and it's the pleasure of the board, here's the concern, if we don't meet today, we cannot meet on the 28th, and that would mean until June. So alternatively, I can meet with each of you individually and give you individual updates, that is at your prerogative, but my sense was that it was preferred to meet collectively to receive the information as a group. So my apologies for not sharing that information, I thought that had been communicated, so that's on me. But, what is the pleasure of the board? If, if we're wiped out, I, I promise it is a very brief presentation on important facts, and there will be documentation later. I have no candy, I have, and we just went through a six-hour cabinet earlier this week on policies and procedures that are coming your way, and...
Mr. Rodriguez, by show of hands, how many people would prefer to have an individual briefing? All right, then we're doing it all together tonight. Excellent. We'll do that, so you want to, you want to save anything you have to say at this point?
I, I'm just not going to be very popular, I'm just going to watch my car, if I get security between cabinet last couple days ago and tonight, so...
Okay.
Security, please.
Okay, in terms of school board committee reports, Member Castro Dental on budget?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. We had our second budget committee meeting with CTA representatives and OESPA. We reviewed the state budget that was passed by the legislature, we are waiting for the governor to sign, and we expect that nothing will change. We learned there will be a projected increase of 12,000 students in the state next year with 30% of those here in Orange County, we get, they project 3,600, which is about another high school just next year. There was an increase in the base student allocation of $75.07, which is more than the .47 cents of last year. So that's good, relatively speaking. And then there was discussion about the various funds that we have that are unassigned, and there are questions, and we are still, I think, a lot of us are in a, in a learning mode of the, of how the budget operates, and I believe the CTA and OESPA will be going forward soon with their bargaining, but we're still uncovering some, or getting answers to some of those questions.
Thank you. And you also had wanted an opportunity to speak to the issue of vaccinations.
Yes.
Now would be the time.
Okay, so, the measles outbreak is... So the measles outbreak is kind of what brought this to my attention. That's in New York City and around the nation. We've had two measles cases reported in Florida, and the Sentinel has run a number of articles and editorials about how Orange County is affected. And I was interested in learning more about what Orange County schools could do. I did hand out to the board members just some information from the Department of Health about where we rank with immunizations, and I found this, it's pretty troubling. So on the far right of your page, it talks about all two-year-olds and their level of immunization, and only 24 counties reported back, but we are lowest, with only 75.9% of our two-year-olds adequately immunized. So it's not just a school district problem. And on the far left, you see we have the immunization status as of kindergarten, and we're on the very back page, second from the bottom, with only 91.1% of our kindergartners who are fully immunized. And that, that is a concern. We do a little better when they get to 7th grade. We're at 93.6% immunized, but again, we're second from the bottom. And that is a, you know, we like, that's an unfortunate stat, but it's even more serious when you think about Orlando as an international travel destination. And The Lancet, Medical Journal even indicated that we are at high risk of a measles outbreak in Orange County. And you can imagine that will, if there was an issue, it would definitely cause, at the least, a disruption in our schools, and it could also be very deadly. So one of the other columns there mentions, the one that says assessment of CHD immunization coverage levels in two-year-old children, that's the health department record. So the students who go, or the children who go to the health department for their vaccinations are doing a good job. So I looked a little farther into the exemptions. There's medical exemptions, temporary exemptions, religious exemptions, and they kind of add up to create this, this low level of immunizations. And here is what I want to talk about. We have, in our schools, we have students who are medically exempt because of their fragile immune system. They cannot get vaccinated. They rely on the rest of us to be fully immunized. There are some who have religious exemptions. However, I don't know if those are all truly religious exemptions. As reported in the paper, there's a bit of leeway there. You just have to say, it's my religious belief. But I think that's where you find the parents who are hesitant to vaccinate based on misinformation. So I know this is a, this is a public health issue, and I think, my belief is that a lot of those parents are trying to do right by their children and are concerned and worried at an individual level, but I think as a school district, our concern is greater in that we need to protect all of the students in our buildings, in our classrooms. And I'd like to see us do, make an aggressive target to bring those numbers up in our school district and work with other community agencies. I've talked with the superintendent, and I think she can speak to some of the things that she's come up with. And I know that Member Gould, working with Shepherd's Hope, she's looked at some of the ideas that, and challenges that her organization, and I know Member Gallo has worked in the legislature, trying to support legislation on vaccination. So I know we are all kind of in the same mindset, but I think if we could kind of brainstorm some ideas and maybe get some ideas with our, all of the ways that we communicate with our parents, we could target this and really do a much better job at keeping our kids safe.
So Dr. Jenkins, couldn't you come back to the board at a future meeting after further discussion with Member Castor Dental and Member Gould and Member Gallo and other members that have an interest with the plan and how the board can be supportive in helping to communicate this? Thank you. And with that, Member Bird?
Thank you. My comments completely not related. Is that okay? Are we on discussion? Okay. We were done with that one. I just wanted to take a minute to thank the staff for reviewing the process with me regarding an elementary relief school in Apopka. It's a big topic. So I just wanted to thank the staff for that. I'm very excited that it looks like the planning process is moving, and it's moving that school forward, hopefully. And I just wondered from, if I could get a, if I could ask Dr. Jenkins if you could share when we might have something officially on that.
Dr. Jenkins?
Certainly, Ms. Bird and members of the board, as many of you have had reviewed with you, we have our five-year plan, which is always fluid. The closer you get to a particular year, those plans become more and more crystallized. And so we try to remind the public that we do not have a five-year plan that is in stone, but it is fluid. And so advanced planning, all the folks, Ms. McGowan's office, and Julie and others, Tommy and those who look at our demographics and our growth trends have been working. Advanced planning, looks like they will be advancing sooner than later, one of the Apopka relief schools. You can't announce it officially, but we know those numbers look promising. It's actually indication that our process works. And so I'm pleased that Ms. Gould's efforts and discussions have certainly been helpful, but this is indication that the process works, much like the high school that we accelerated to an earlier date as well. So always we have fluid plans. It will become more official when you adopt your tentative budget July 30th, and that is when you would have both your capital and your operating budget, and we would have the recommendation at that time. That five-year plan will show an escalation of one of the Apopka relief sites. And so certainly hope that will help relieve some of the concern in Ms. Bird's area in particular, and certainly want to commend her for being vigilant on behalf of her schools. But I want the board to understand the process does work. Annually, we review that five-year plan, doesn't take any emergency action. It's an annual process that we're pleased is going to show a recommended acceleration of that school. So July 30th is when you adopt your tentative budget, and that is when it would actually be more official. Certainly, if anyone's listening in, clearly we have that recommendation coming forward from staff.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. And let me also mention that similar effort is underway in Member Gould's district. She's been working vigilantly to work with staff to try to look at those numbers in advance of schools in her district as well. So with that, Member Gordon, Member Gallo, and we are still waiting to go meet with Woody. So Member Gordon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did want to thank Karen, Board Member, Karen Castor Dental for bringing in this report, but I always say it's a poor frog that does not praise its own paw. I'm really happy that she brought this report in. And I took a look at it myself, and I looked at the part that stated the percentage of specific vaccinations for children programs that did not go wasted, spoiled, expired, or unaccounted for. And a lot of these kids in my district, so I'm happy about it. We were ranked number one and 100%, so we passed the state goal. We really passed the state goal. So you got to learn how to praise your own paw in here. So Orange County ranked number one, 100%, and the state goal was only 97%. And then they also stated the assessment of the CHD immunization coverage and the level two-year-old children. Orange County exceeded that goal, which was 99.5, and the state goal was only 95, and we did 99.5. And then the national goal was 80%, Dr. Jenkins, and we did 99.5. So I think that's head trauma. And even down at the bottom where you did share the immunization status report with the 7th graders, they stated that those double lines met or exceeded state goals. So we had 93.6. I think rankings sometime throw us the ranking, but it's because so many states, county did well. But the state goal was 95, and the national goal was 90. So we had 93.6. So thank you for bringing in this great report for Orange County Public School. For Orange County, that is. All the children accounted in there.
Just for the record, we are 40% of the way through the week, and that sounds Numbers are numbers. All right, we have Member Gallo. I am counting on you to bring us home.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For this quick indulgence, I received a letter from a student at Glen Ridge Middle School as part of her service project, and so I just wanted to share it because I always love it when students email me, or in this case, write to me about a service project, and this is for Glen Ridge Middle School, and they're looking to do recycling bins at the school. I will reach out to the principal there to see if I can do anything. But Ella, thank you so much. If you're listening or paying attention for this wonderful letter and petition, I appreciate them. Keep it coming. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Gordon. I may not be able to help after all.
You got money, you can help.
All right. This meeting is now adjourned.